I'd like to call over the work session. We're going to do that one more time because it just went off. I have to welcome you to the work session on March 26th. The time is 5 o'clock. And we are all here. So we're going to go on to the first agenda item. We have two tonight, and I would like to remind council refrain from asking questions until staff presentations are complete. So we'll go to 3.1. This is always a fun one. Staff will present art and culture commission recommendations for the pilot artist embellishment, traffic cabinet beautification program. Galene Oszczewski, arts and culture coordinator is presenting. Galene?
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm very happy to be here this evening to bring this information to you. During tonight's presentation, we're going to explore the Arts and Culture Commission and staff recommendations for locations for artists embellished traffic cabinets. And work discussed with you identifying those potential locations for this pilot program. In the FY '18 annual public art plan, council approved expenditures for creating up to five artists embellished traffic cabinets. And so to narrow down five cabinets from the many intersections we have in the city, we had a few inputs that we were able to bring in there to really kind of narrow it down to find the best locations for these. The first thing we looked at was our FY '18 traffic signal asset management plan. The thought being that if we place the art on a brand-new traffic cabinet, which the traffic cabinets do have a 10-year life expectancy, we get the maximum time that the artwork would be on display. So in FY '18, there was 22 sites that were scheduled to have the cabinets replaced. So from those 22 locations, we then were able to take from our last council meeting back in April, council shared some directions and some priorities that they had that they would like to see in a pilot program. Those included exploring sites that were on or near city properties, looking at locations that have improved intersections, that it's landscaped, so that if we're drawing the viewer's eye to an area, it's an area we want them looking at, as well as avoiding sites where there's so many cabinets and other utility cabinets that it really clutters the view or it's the question of why did you add artwork to this cabinet and not the other ones. So using those council priorities, the Public Art Subcommittee of the Arts and Culture Commission really went through each one of those 22 sites, and they were able to narrow it down to eight locations using council's priorities. Additionally, the Public Art Subcommittee wanted to find, to identify sites that were both north and south of the I-10, and to group them together so that we created some viewing corridors. Since it is a pilot program, we would like to have some of these cabinets nearby so that you kind of get a feel if we were to expand this program further. So from those eight sites that the Arts and Culture Commission recommended, staff went through those eight sites and was able to narrow it down then to five potential sites that I'm going to share with you this evening. On this slide, we'll look at images of each of the intersections, as well as then looking at an overview map so you can kind of see how they're located within the city of Goodyear. So the first site that we have is at Litchfield Road and Western Avenue. As you can see, we're recommending that this be a painted cabinet, which that meant the artist would go onsite and actually paint a mural, so to speak, on the cabinet at a cost of $3,000. That would have a life expectancy of five to 10 years. So here is our site at Litchfield Road and Western Avenue. You can see the cabinet doesn't have other boxes nearby. It has great potential. With it being in our historic Goodyear area, there's great potential for themes and what this artwork could look like. We were very excited about this site. You can also kind of notice in the picture that there is an issue with graffiti here. And, you know, our hope and our experience in the past that when you add some artwork, it does help alleviate that, you know, at times. And so adding the artwork there will beautify this corner, as well as maybe help us with that graffiti. The next intersection that we'll look at is Litchfield Road and Auto Drive. This is also being recommended to be a painted cabinet. This would be a cost of $3,000. As you can see, this is a great corner. It is landscaped. We have some utility boxes, but they're offset from it that has a nice view for the north, south, and east-west traffic. Moving down Litchfield Road and heading north, we're going to look at Litchfield Road and Avalon Drive. And this will be the first one that we're recommending as a wrapped cabinet and to, just as a refresher. Wrapped means we would hire an artist to create a design that would then be printed on the vinyl material that is then applied to the surface of the cabinet. And we're looking at a cost of $1,800 for that application method with a three-to-five-year life expectancy. Mayor, council member Hampton?
We're going to wait until it's...
Okay, that's fine.
Can you just hold off? Thank you.
All right, so at this site, you can see this is at the corner where Goodyear Community Park is. So this is one, the utility box is a little nearer, but it's still offset, so you have a good view of the artwork that would be on the cabinet. And we were very excited that we'd be able to have this as kind of an entry into our great park that's on Litchfield Road. Next site is Indian School Road and 141st Avenue. This would be another wrapped method at $1,800 with the three-to-five-year life expectancy. This is a very busy site because there's a lot of traffic going in and out of the retail businesses that are here at this site. It's very well landscaped. It's very lovely to look at. And as you can see, there's very few boxes. There's one very low-profiled box off to the left there, but otherwise, it's not cluttered, and it would be a nice place to have some artwork. Our final location that's being proposed is Indian School Road and 144th Avenue. We're again looking at a painted cabinet here where the artist will go onsite to paint at a cost of $3,000. This is in a residential area on Indian School, and it's near Millennium High School. Has great potential for us to engage the art students at the high school, work with the residents in that area to come up with something that they would be proud to have on the corner there near them. Again, it's harder to see in this. There has been some issues with some graffiti on that box. So again, this might be a great way if we get the students in there to work and put some artwork in there. It may help in alleviating that problem. If council recommends moving forward with all five of these cabinets, we're looking at an expenditure of $12,600. And as we had discussed before, it would be funded through the traffic signal asset management program. If this is a successful program, or when this is a successful program, and if council does see, recommend that this move forward, we will look at finding a dedicated funding source. We wouldn't probably leave this in the asset management program. As well as when we look at our life expectancy here, life expectancy on these cabinets, the painted cabinets, we're looking at five to 10 years. So there's potential that one painted cabinet's going to reach the lifetime of the cabinet itself, but the wrapped cabinets will not. They will require at least one more application of the wrap at a minimum during the life expectancy of that cabinet. So there will be future maintenance needs for this pilot program, and we would address that through our supplemental process in the budget annually to meet those needs for these five cabinets. And here's an overview of the city. The yellow pins kind of show and demonstrate where those are. I know everyone's driven the streets, but it's nice to be able to see just kind of the overview. We do have cabinets that we're proposing that are north as well as south of the 10, and we have grouped them together so that we can kind of get that great, you know, overview and get a feel of what this program would look like. So to summarize on this, I'm excited about this program because I love when we're able to engage our local artists in beautifying their community. This is a way that we'll be able to engage the nearby businesses and the residents in this process. We are recommending both the wrapped cabinets and the painted cabinets. Since it is a pilot program, we'd like to see what both look like, see how the residents respond to both. That will really give us some good information if we choose to move forward, see if we continue with both methods, or if one method's better than the other. I mentioned that this will be funded for the pilot program through the traffic signal asset management plan, but if we do continue it, we would look for a more permanent dedicated funding source to continue it. And with any pilot program, we want to have a great evaluation process so that we can measure the success. And so we're looking at engaging with the Tom van to go out and talk to our residents to really get a feel, to be able to talk to them one-on-one, to see how they like the cabinets, as well as doing resident surveys. Once the, all the cabinets are completed and we've been gathered that data, we would come back to council with a six-month follow-up to share what that is and gauge council's response to it to see if there's potential for it to move forward. So this evening, what I am seeking from council is three things. To get your thoughts on the locations of the cabinets that we have proposed, the number of cabinets that you would like to see embellished, as well as the method of the applied artwork. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I would like to turn it over to council floor for questions.
Well done. Thanks for all the information. I think they're ready. So I'm going to start with Brandon, since Brandon, you wanted to speak first tonight.
So you might have recovered it. So, so once the wrap, the wrap has been artist-rendered, how much does it cost to replace the wrap in and of itself?
So at this time, mayor, council member Hampton, at this time, we're looking at a cost of $800 to $1,000 to have the artwork applied to the cabinet. Once we own the artwork, we don't have to repurchase the artwork. So we would have the art design. It would just be the cost of having the company come out and reapply a fresh new wrap to it.
So that'd be the 800, you're saying, roughly?
Approximately, roughly, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to thank staff. I think it's a good idea, and I think the locations are great. I think those are good spots, north and south of the freeway. I think we can add a lot of character to those, to those areas, and then more identity for those areas as well. So, yeah, so thank you. Thank you for the hard work. I think it'll be good for the city.
Thank you. Joe?
Again, as I've asked you in the past, this is what I've been looking for, and trying to add some art. And I'm probably the last guy to ask about art because I'm a numbers guy, but again, I think anything we can do to beautify that area, I like. The question I have, though, pertains to the graffiti. Is there certain types of paints that the artist can use in case it comes back, which makes it easy to remove? Are the wraps easier because you can put it on some type of film where it makes it almost graffiti-proof, so if something goes on there, you wash it off type of thing? What I'm wondering is, is there one application better than the other just in case we get the taggers again?
Mayor, council member Pazillo, it's a great question. So on the, and there's two answers to that because it depends on which applied artwork method. With the painted cabinets, there is, there's a paint that they put on, a sealant that does help deter the graffiti, and you're able to wash it off. On the wrap, you know, I did talk to the company about the graffiti measures, and there's something they can apply to it. They said that can help. They didn't recommend it because of the cost. It was almost more cost-effective to say, hey, if it gets marked, we're just going to replace the whole vinyl wrap. So I think for the painted cabinets, it's a much easier way to remove the graffiti, and that's another reason why we've recommended the sites that we've recommended for the painted application method.
Thank you.
Sherri?
I want to thank you and your whole commission for this because I know, and I think it was Joe that brought it forward and everything, our surprise artist over there. You know, you gave us a lot of, to think about, a lot of ideas and everything, and I think you guys have narrowed it down just wonderfully. I like the fact that they're clustered, so people will see them and kind of, you know, they'll kind of spark, they'll see maybe a couple in a row, and I think you'll get a lot of really positive feedback. So I'm very excited. I think it'll help beautify our city. And we were just in San Diego last weekend, and you saw these around the beach, and they do pop at you, you know? They're nice. They, they kind of bring on the character of the neighborhood. So I am very excited. I want to thank your commission for bringing these forward.
Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, great job by everybody. I'm excited to see these, see these put up. So thanks for bringing it.
Thank you. Joanne?
This was one of those scary times when Joe and I were on the same page because as he was bringing it up, I had put the paperwork on Brian's desk and said, hey, this is what I've been talking about. So, so it was great. Now, when we had that work session, first of all, just as Sherri said, you know, your group, your commission, the whole team, looking at all the art stuff and really pinpointing what you guys have done, you know, thank you so much for that. I think that the locations are great. I have one question. And tell me what you think. Because originally, when we had that work session, we wanted to give it back to the art commission so you guys could figure out, do we do it in just one area as a pilot? You guys kind of spread it out, which is fine with me. But I have this further south in the city kind of question. And I just wonder, in location-wise, if there's not, maybe there's not, and that's why you didn't pick anywhere closer to the Austraia's or within Austraia, but I was just even thinking about where the dog, well, the dog park, we even have a great water feature-looking, well, not water feature, but great...
It's called Water Source.
There we go, thank you. But I was just wondering, just as we go down Austraia Parkway, or just somewhere getting closer, even by the ballpark, something that, so we don't make the southern citizens feel like they weren't parked. So that's why I bring that up. But maybe there's nothing, as you guys strategically looked, maybe there's just nothing there yet.
Mayor, council member Osborne, great questions. We did, we looked up Austraia Parkway. I think that when you start looking for improved intersections where you have some landscaping in there, there's some areas that are still growing in our city, and so we didn't find a site that was really fit all of the criteria that we have. So I think that's why it ended up more in that Indian School kind of corridor and then along Litchfield Road where we have the most development at this, you know, for those business areas. I think that once we see how this program goes, that's definitely an area we'd love to explore and be able to move up into that area and, like you said, you know, bring some artwork to our Austraia residents as well. I'm looking at the eight sites that the Arts Commission did consider before we narrowed it down to five, and there were two sites on Austraia Parkway. It was at Roosevelt and Van Buren Street that there was potential for, but nothing quite as south as up in the Austraia community.
And I thoroughly respect that. I just think for the record, letting everyone hear that that's, you know, we, we weren't leaving them out. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Molly?
Well, because we've had the graffiti problem in some of the neighborhoods that I have been associated with, I'm just curious. I'd like to know after the pilot program gets established if we do have the graffiti because if we continually have graffiti on the wrapped ones, we may not want to keep wrapping them. We may want to move to another site rather than that particular corner, I would think. But I do know that you can get the paint that, and use the paint on the cabinets because we do that in some of our neighborhoods, and we're able to get rid of the graffiti pretty quickly. We do know that there are some citizens in Goodyear that are not going to be real thrilled about us spending money on metal cabinets because when this came up, there was a lot of talk online about how we were spending money on something like that, and they would rather us do something else. So I'm hopeful that they'll see what we're trying to do to make the neighborhoods look better, but then, on the other hand, be open to the suggestion to make Goodyear really an arts place. We can only hope.
Vice mayor, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the presentation, and I like the idea that you're doing just a certain amount. I would rather have the citizens come to us and say, how come I didn't get that? I want one in my neighborhood, rather than just putting them out there. So I think it will reduce some of the negativity. So are you going to do something like also online where you have it set up, so yes and no, and so you keep account that way, too?
Yes, mayor, there's definitely a lot of potential on how we can gather that survey data and doing something along the lines through social media or an online link through our website. We'll definitely explore multiple areas since everyone communicates a little bit differently, and we want to make sure we get a wide demographic of our residents when we get their input.
And I think if our publicity on this would address what Joanne was worried about, that we can actually say the reason that we have it in this area is because of this and that, and tell them the story. So once they know why we did it, I think that they'll be either happy or not happy because they'll either want it or don't want it, and feel they're lucky, whichever. So anyway, great job. So just one more question on the park area. So are you going to do something in that area that actually designates the park or gives a feeling of your pass in the park area?
So mayor, you're referring to Litchfield Road and Avalon Drive by Goodyear Community Park. I definitely think that the theme of being at a park will definitely be highlighted there. Once we engage the artists, that's when we'll start working on designs and what that artwork will look like. But identifying that sense of place through art is just what it does. And so we'll want to make sure that we pick up on those themes to really highlight what is nearby there.
Of course, the other thing, you will have those that are a little challenged navigating. Won't you remember, just go down to the sign with this picture on it, right?
Yes, Joe?
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on what you mentioned, Galene. I think the whole idea, which I'm hoping this takes off to the effect that you'll get people wanting to step up and participate when they see the artwork that, you know, Jill made, or Jen made, or Georgia made, and they're saying, hey, I can do that, and I like to be a part of this and be part of my community corner. I like to design something. So my hope is, as you mentioned, the feeling of goodness through art. And again, I'm probably the wrong guy to talk about this because of my background, but I think it's great. I think it's a sense of community when people see that, makes them feel good. And if you get the participation of the students, because you even have the mayor's art council where you've got a lot of people select coming up, I think that could be a really positive byproduct of this whole program, to get more people engaged in our community, want to make it look better, feel better, and have some ownership in this. So that's what my ultimate goal was when we did this, was to get others involved and be proud of what they're putting out there.
So that'll be the next presentation. We'll have one of those, they have to have one of those on their painting.
We will.
Okay. Yeah, Sherri?
And I just wanted to say, but when you're talking about the park, when we get the new aquatics park, that might be the time to, if this works, to do that area around Austraia from the ballpark to the aquatics park, you know, once we get that up and running. So if this works, that might be the time to kind of phase into that one.
Good. Any other questions? Well, thank you so much. Tell your committee, thank you.
I will. Thank you very much.
All right, we'll go on to 3.2, and the staff will provide council with information on the School Resource Officer Program that is currently in place in Goodyear schools. And that staff happens to be our chief of police, Jerry Guyer.
Good evening, mayor and council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to speak with you about school security and our school programs. In light of what's going on around the country, I think this is actually a perfect time to hear what the Goodyear Police Department is doing in our schools. Before starting, I just want to say that as your chief of police, protecting our schools and the safety of our children is our number-one priority at the Goodyear Police Department. And tonight, you're going to see some of the things that we're doing that actually put us a step ahead of what you'll see in other places. So in tonight's presentation, you'll hear information on our School Resource Officer Program. You will hear how our SROs are assigned and about their roles and responsibilities. You'll hear about, you'll see a list of other Valley cities and how their SRO programs operate. You'll receive information of things we're seeing in our schools, our challenges, trends, and how social media has played a part in those challenges. I will talk about some of our school programs we have and our response to threats and school violence, and how we're keeping our Goodyear schools safe. At the end, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you.
So in Goodyear, we have 24 public, private, and charter schools in our city. These schools are part of six primary school districts. On the chart, basically, you see a listing of all the school districts in our schools. So the way our School Resource Officer Program works, we have one SRO supervisor and three SROs. Each of those SROs are assigned to a high school, which is really their primary duty. We want our SROs to spend as much time as the high schools because that's where our largest student population is, and that's where we have the most calls for service at those schools. So in addition to the high school, each SRO is responsible for seven to eight other schools, including a middle school, elementary schools, and then private and charter schools. It's the expectation that each SRO will try and visit each of those schools once a week. The SRO supervisor handles administrative responsibility, complaints, attends functions, and acts as a liaison to the school district, and covers the schools when our SROs are out, maybe sick or in training. In addition to their other duties that we're going to discuss coming up here in a minute, SROs responded to 1,331 calls for service at the schools in 2017. Now, those calls included everything from child abuse, to assaults, to threats, drugs, or there's going to be a fight in the courtyard after school. So our SROs perform a variety of functions on our schools. For example, they do things like anti-bullying presentations. And just a side note on anti-bullying awareness, that's extremely important, especially now because if you look at the incidents that have occurred across the country, many times those suspects experienced some type of bullying in previous years. That's very important right now. Our SROs do presentations on drug awareness, underage drinking, teen suicide to students and parents. They teach classes on a block of law to the students. They oversee security at sporting events and school assemblies. They do career day events, mock DUI events, and participate in lids-on-kids, which is our bicycle helmet program. Their SROs have one-on-one time with students for open discussion, which obviously can lead to a variety of different topics. The SROs also investigate cases and conduct follow-up for patrol when there's a nexus to the school. They also conduct mock drills for active shooters and school lockdown drills. So this next chart, I apologize, I had to split it up into two charts. The first one, you're going to see five cities on this page, and there'll be five on the next page. This chart will show you how we compare to these other cities as to how many SROs we have and the funding sources. And before we go through the chart, I just want to explain what we mean by the funding sources. There's really three ways that schools fund their SROs. One way is by city funding, as we do in Goodyear. And actually, you can see on the chart that the town of Gilbert is really the only other municipality that funds all of their SROs through the town. The second way municipalities fund SROs is through the Arizona Department of Education's school safety grant. This grant pays for 100% of the officer's salary for three years. However, the grant has some requirements which take some of the control away from the PD. First, the grant must come from the school district and not the city. So basically, we couldn't apply for it anyways. It has to be applied for, and the oversight is done by the schools, not us. There are some other guidelines in the grant that would require us to change the way we operate our SRO program. The grant requires for the SRO to be on campus 80% of the time, and that time is tracked through logs of the schools. So this would be problematic for us because our SROs couldn't necessarily leave to visit the other schools that they have responsibility for. In addition, they couldn't leave for other emergencies. And for example, I will tell you that our School Resource Officer in Austraia, Austraia's Foothills High School, we call on him frequently to lead the school and respond to emergencies or things down in Austraia as an additional unit. So we would be limited in doing that if we had a certain amount of time we had to spend at the school. The grant suggests that if there's a criminal incident on the campus, the SRO should act as the backup to the arrest rather than the principal officer. And really, their philosophy of the grant is it's about building relationships with the schools and the community, and the SRO should not be the arresting officer. So obviously, this means pulling additional officers to the school if we have some type of criminal incident. After three years, the grant cycle is complete, and the school district can reapply. There's no limit on how many times they can reapply, but it's extremely competitive. Out of over 200 applications during the last round, only 113 were funded, meaning the city might be on the hook for the SROs after the three-year period. So the grant does have some requirements with presents challenges and would not be our preferred way of funding our SROs. So our preferred way is through an IGA with the school district. You'll see on the chart that several school districts partially fund SROs. The IGAs that you see up there are usually 50% of the officer's salary, and the advantage of the IGA is we don't have the strict requirements that we would with the grant. So some exciting news tonight is recently, we've been in conversation with the superintendent of the Aqua Free High School District. Although it's not a done deal yet, all indications are that by July 1st, we will have 50% funding. Although it's not a done deal yet, all indications are that by July 1st, we will have 50% funding for one of our SROs at our high school. By next July, we'll receive 50% funding for a second SRO at our high school. So that's good news. So in looking at the chart, obviously, we see Goodyear. Next is Avondale. Avondale has three SROs. Two of those are funded through the Safety Grant, one with an IGA with Aqua Freea. Buckeye, five SROs. Four of those are paid by the city, and one is funded through an IGA. And I won't, just for, just to expedite things, I won't go through all of these. Glendale, for example, you see they have five SROs. And you may have seen the news, Glendale was in the news just last week, where they have made a commitment to place SROs in all of their high schools. I can tell you, for comparison purposes, Glendale has 111 schools in their city. So, and again, that's something we're already doing. We already have SROs in all our high schools. You see Peoria. Peoria has four SROs. They're all partially funded through IGAs. And just again, as another, for comparison purposes, Mesa has 15 SROs. Mesa is the largest school district in the state of Arizona. They have 173 schools. So challenges, what we're seeing obviously this year is school threats, and they've been more prevalent than ever before. It's been a trend all across the country, and the bottom line is that many times, these threats are not credible, but we must treat everyone like they are until we can show otherwise. So we always take everyone seriously. We see more and more threats on social media. The good thing is that when it comes in on social media, there's good odds that we can track the sender down and make an arrest. So on that slide, the picture on the far left, we actually received that at the Goodyear Police Department. I don't know why it came to Goodyear, but when we got that, we sent it to the South Point High School in Phoenix, and they were able to identify the sender and go out and make an arrest. In the middle, you see, this is an actual Goodyear case. You see where it says, "I'm going to shoot up this school." That was actually written on one of the walls of the school. And although it seems very simple, again, we won't take any of them lightly. We investigated, we have not determined who wrote that as of this time. The last two pictures are other trends that we've been seeing this year. The good thing is, we haven't seen any other ones in quite a while. It's the edible marijuana candy. The bag on the right, the red one, that's, both of them are actual Goodyear cases, but that's a case where a fifth grader brought that to school, shared it with five of his friends. They all ended up getting sick. We did some investigation. That one, we couldn't determine. He didn't know, the student didn't know that it was anything, he just thought it was candy. We were not able to determine how he got ahold of that bag. The other candy is an actual case from one of our high schools. One of the students brought that to school, passed it out. Again, people became sick. We identified where it came from, and were able to criminally charge that student in that case. So anytime we receive a threat, it's fully investigated. We will interview witnesses who heard the threat, or observed the threat if it was in writing. We'll contact suspects and parents. We'll determine the suspect's involvement and obtain background information from the parents to try to determine if it's credible or not. That could be anything from, does the student have access to weapons? Had they ever been involved in anything violent in the past? While we're investigating, we're also working with the school district. If the threat appears immediate and credible, the school can go into lockdown, lockout, which means basically nobody leaves or comes while we're investigating. Many times, the schools will like to send a letter home to the parents indicating what's happened. So in addition to our criminal investigation, the school also has administrative sanctions that they can impose on students. That could be anything such as in-or-out school suspension, transfer, or expulsion. If we determine who made the threat, that person will be arrested and criminally charged. So we have instituted many programs in our schools, and our SROs are highly proactive in working to keep our kids safe. Our flagship program, which was started several years ago, is our School Substation Program. This became a national model, and received attention from all over the country. It's very simple the way it works. We've, the school district gave us office space at three of their schools, one in the north part of town, one in the middle of town, and one in the south part of town. We have an office there. We encourage our officers who are on patrol to stop by. When they do, obviously, they're able to interact with the students, they interact with staff, and they provide a deterrent by just being on the, at the school. It's not a full-time position, or it's not a position that's at the school in the substation. It's just patrol officers who are available to stop by. And you might ask, well, you know, can't we expand that and make it bigger? There's some challenges, and the challenge is getting our officers to stop by enough. They're busy, they're doing proactive things out in the road. So we may go, you know, days without seeing an officer at the school, or some days, we may have multiple officers at the school. It just depends. But it's challenging, especially to add more schools to that program and get them to see officers regularly. We are proud to participate in events like Councilmember Osborne's Building Blocks for Education, which just so happens to be tomorrow morning. It's a great opportunity for many of our city departments to collaborate with school superintendents, principals, and school staff members. The meeting tomorrow, actually, we're doing something a little different this year. Because of everything going on across the country, we actually will have a Goodyear SRO, an Avondale SRO, and a Buckeye SRO there to talk to school administrators about things they're seeing in the schools and different trends. And then there'll be plenty of time for questions and answers afterwards. We're working with City Communications on a PSA about school threats in our high schools. The idea will be that the PSA will be broadcast to students at each high school, and will include information like what to do if I hear or see a threat, how to report it, and there'll be some information making it clear to students that making a threat is a crime, and you can be arrested if you do that. After the tragic shooting in Florida, I had our SRO sergeant visit every school in Goodyear to meet with school staff to ensure they report everything to us immediately if it involves a threat, and also to ensure they understand our standard response protocol that I'm going to talk to you about in just a minute. So you've heard me mention the standard response protocol in the presentation, and what that is, it's a national program that we've incorporated in our Goodyear schools. You see the picture up on the left-hand side, which is actually, explains a little bit about the program. But what it is, the program is a response model for any type of event. Could be a weather event, it could be a fire, it could be an accident, it could be an intruder, any threats to student safety. The model defines what happens, whether it's lockdown, a lockout, whether there's evacuations, whether there's sheltering if an incident was to occur. And so that program has been adopted by our agency and all of our schools. So everybody's on the same sheet of music, per se, as what to do in case we have an emergency. And then we've talked about already that we take, investigate every threat completely. So we're getting closer to my presentation, but before we get to the questions, I just want to mention some of the security measures that we're seeing already in our schools. We're seeing a heightened awareness, a heightened awareness by staff of our schools and increased collaboration between our schools and the police department. We're seeing events like our building blocks and a town hall meeting that I'll be attending in April, where all the superintendents will be present at, and it will be networking as well as an active shooter and mass casualty training. In our schools, we're seeing controlled access points where schools are locking their doors and all, at all times during the day, and buzzing people in only once they've been identified. Some schools have cameras. We have met with every school in the last two weeks to ensure they're aligned with our standard response protocol. And we're looking at some technology such as a panic device and phone apps where staff member can actually push a button and immediately be connected with PD personnel responding to their incident at the school. So there are also other precautions that we're doing. Some of those, I can't really mention in a public meeting. But we also know that the governor has acted a plan for school safety, and we're anxious to see exactly what that looks like. We just don't know everything yet. So how do we get this message out? One is social media. I can tell you that we're very proactive with information about what our SROs are doing and activities in our schools. We respond to questions and concerns from member of the public on social media. When an event happens, we try to be as proactive as we can getting information out. Our IN Focus, the April issue including articles about SROs and school safety. The August issue of IN Focus will be totally dedicated to back-to-school and school safety. Our SROs do presentations to parents and students in the schools. We're featured, we have articles in like Up the Hill Magazine down in Estrella. The March edition, we did an article on school threats. So we've already done several things to try to get the message out there as best we can. So finally, I just want to tell you that members of the Goodyear Police Department are very well-trained and prepared for anything that can happen, or any type of event that could happen in our schools. And with that, any questions?
That was impressive. Who would like to talk first? Joe?
Again, just to echo what the mayor just said, that was impressive. And a lot of the questions that I thought I was going to ask, you answered them for me. But to me, and tell me if I'm on the right track, it almost seems like building those relationships with not just the kids, but the actual teachers and the school itself, so they feel comfortable enough to quickly identify. And that, and I think the message has to get out, and that's what I heard in your message as well, is pranks don't cut it anymore. You threaten, there's charges against you. So I think that's important, too, to get that message out, that these pranks won't be tolerated for any of these that aren't, that even if you find out that it was insane, you've got to press these to make sure that people wear that. But again, I think the model that you're using, I'm not sure what the governor is going to do. Personally, I think the SRO program and the communications that you're doing is, to me, key to try to get a handle on these type of issues. And I really appreciate all the work you're doing. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Dale?
I was at the Joint Task Force of the West for Homeland Security when this event in Florida occurred. So we had a lot of discussion during, during the days that followed, and everybody had an opinion about what, what should or shouldn't be done. But at the end, it was about the proactive relationships and where things were at. And I just sat back very confident that that's exactly what you were doing. So I didn't really give it a second thought. You guys had a couple of meetings, and then I saw this come up on the agenda, and I thought, why are we having this discussion? This is what the chief does. But then, that was important, I think, for everybody to hear that. It's great that I know that, and I feel very comfortable with that, but I really appreciate the proactive nature that, not only just on this issue, but really every issue that you've pushed through PD, has really been about, about being proactive and about staying ahead of, ahead of things. And I think we see that day in and day out, and we take it all for granted, that, you know, our crime rate is exceptionally low in the city. And it's not because of, it's not because of budgets, it's not because of, I mean, it is, but at the end of the day, it's really about being proactive in everything that we do. So I can sit here very confidently knowing and trusting in what you've got to say is really what, what is happening. It's a multifaceted issue. It is not, SROs are not going to solve the problem, they're not going to, they're not going to prevent it from ever happening. And it is going to take the collaboration between law enforcement, the schools, it's going to take funding, it's going to take a change in, in societal views of things that go on. So I appreciate everything that you and the men and women of the Goodyear PD are doing to keep us ahead of, ahead of the problem. So thanks.
Thank you.
Sherry?
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for your entire department. We had a couple, well, first of all, I think it's kind of, it's really sad we're having this conversation. You know, that we have to have this conversation. You are being proactive, your officers are wonderful. It's just the time we live in. Our school, Estrella, that's now, you cannot go on campus unless you're buzzed in. You can't even walk in after school and pick up your children. And that's kind of, I find that sad because that's not how I grew up. And they had a, the officers did a wonderful, didn't scare the kids, but they did a lockdown drill in Estrella, so I'm sure you're doing it all year, where you put your hands up and, you know, and they did a wonderful job not to scare the children. Because we've had some incidences up there, and I want to give kudos to Officer McFadden, who is our high school one up there. The kids love him, they did a decorate his door contest at the high school. He also was in the grade schools. He gave presentations to the parents at the coffee with the principal recently. So, and there was one incident that the parents kind of went a little haywire on Facebook, and there wasn't the right facts, and he had a meeting with them to make sure that they knew that their kids were safe. Because sometimes on some of these social media sites, the wrong information gets out, and people get scared and concerned. But it was very, I think it was him that did the meeting, but it was, police was there, and so they got the right information. This is what we're doing. And then after that, a lot, it calmed a lot of fears. And we're friends with quite a few teachers up there, and I think everybody feels safe. And if you're replicating, obviously, what I see in my, where I go pick up our kids or where they're going, I know that they're safe, and you're doing a great job. I think a lot of the public didn't realize that we have one in every high school, which I think is absolutely wonderful, and that we also are covering the grade schools. If the governor's plan allows us to get for a grant that isn't going to basically make it difficult, you know, maybe look into that. I don't know what the new grants will come out for, but anything that can do to help your department would be great. And in saying that, it looks like you have this program covered well, and you had it covered well before all this hit the media. But if you find at any time that, honestly, if you need more people, or if you, to cover this program or cover where they need to fill out so you can cover this program, please let us know. Because I know everyone in this council wants to make sure our kids are safe, and that is such a priority for our council. So thank you to your staff and all the officers, because we do see them around, we see them at the football games, and they are part of the community because they seem to stay at, you keep them at the same school. So they get known by the kids and everything. So I think it's a great program, and I feel very safe, you know, with everything that's going on, sending our children to Goodyear schools. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you want to talk first? Twain?
Thank you. Well, Chief, you know, I have to say how proud I am of you and your whole department because it really has been an honor to be part of a city that our departments are so proactive in coming up with ideas and really venture out to build those relationships. And, you know, when Sandy Hook occurred, and, you know, Gina with Mabel Pageant reached out to you, and it was, you know, those, those relationships are so important. And, you know, obviously, this is, as Sherry said, we hate to have to have this conversation and to talk about it, and, and I understand that, but it's timely, and we need to. And the fact that, yes, Building Blocks is tomorrow, you know, this is perfect. You know, when I had reached out to the superintendents, I said, okay, you know, we all, we usually have, I think this is either my ninth or 10th Building Blocks, and I said, okay, we have community conversations. Here's what we did, you know, talked about last year. Do you want me to take things out, add things? What do you think? And, you know, it was overwhelmingly, school safety is what's on everybody's mind. And I said, okay. And then, you know, from there, it was like, what's, what can we do? And the fact that our school districts flank other cities, Avondale and Buckeye, and it was like, well, invite them too. And we have council members from Buckeye and Avondale and Litchfield Park coming. And it occurred to me last week, at the end of the week, when, when we were, you know, I was having, having this great, you know, gathering of everybody on top of the normal, wonderful gathering, was that our newest high school that's being built is in the county. And Litchfield Elementary School is in Litchfield, but there is no police department. And so, so it was like, well, who, who will respond to those? And back to the governor's plan and everything that we look at, so I reached out to Clint Hickman, and I said, hey, you know, why don't you, you or one of your staff come be part of this, you know, because it's seed planting. It's, it's how do we go from here and continue those, those relationships? So, so I really appreciate it, you know, when my, all my kids went to Millennium High School, and, you know, they, each one of them knew, gosh, Officer G, and I know he's retired now, but it was like, you know, you just had that relationship with them. And, and they really, it was, it was very good, and I'm thankful for that. I also appreciate you giving the background on the funding for SROs, or how other cities are doing it. Because I think that's very, very important to every citizen wherever they live, of how, and school districts, how can we together, you know, fund this or work on this? how, and school districts, how can we together, you know, fund this or work on this? And, and the fact of why we don't necessarily want to go from this, for this grant funding is because they're doing multiple things, you know, I understand completely. But, but, you know, that was something I'd never known before, so I really appreciated your background. But please tell all of your department that really do thank them for everything they do. Thanks.
Wally?
Well, we just had this conversation before, before we even had a meeting today. But Chief, it's wonderful when I talk to the high school kids, and they know who their SROs are, and they know who the SRO's family is, and their kids, and their dog, and their colors. And it's just an amazing family feeling that we have in our schools with our SROs. And we want to thank you for your leadership and for them being so willing to be a part of our community, and it's so important. I also want to thank you for taking part in the opiate conversation, because it's starting again, you'll be hearing more, and because it's in our schools, on top of being afraid of the safety of the children, to me, drugs is a safety issue as well. It's not all guns. It's a variety of things. And I appreciate you being so proactive and making Goodyear feel that we are doing the best we can do for our kids. It's important for us to also realize the toll it takes on our officers with the constant threats and the constant wondering, is this the real thing? Is this really what's going to happen? And I know there's no way for us to gauge that, but I just know that we, as responsible citizens and parents, we need to speak up if we see something that isn't right, or if we see a child acting out that's not in, in the manner of which we're used to seeing, or if we see something that's strange, we need to also speak up. And it's not only at high schools, it's elementary schools, it's just, it's everywhere. But, and I know your officers can't be everywhere and be everything to everyone, but for all they're doing, we do thank you so much. And you have our total support so that we can continue to do the job that you're trained to do.
Thank you.
Brandon?
Yeah, I want to echo what everyone's saying. Thank you to you and your department, and for folks, part of your focus of keeping our children safe. I know my kids are in one of our Goodyear schools here, so I know they've been changing the mythology of how we access the schools and things like that, which is fine, and I appreciate you and your staff going out to all the schools and just reaffirming that you are there, and that you're there to help them, and understanding the programs and things like that. And to the Building Blocks program as well, I'm glad that we're reaching across the city lines as well to, to attack it as a, as a shared regional type concern. So, so thank you for that as well. And then I had a quick question about the, so with our potential Aqua Free 50% grant, does that look like we might get another officers, or just supplement the existing officers to the, to the SRO program?
It would be to supplement the funding. So assuming this works out, yes, this July, we should see 50% of the salary of one of our existing SROs. And we have two Aqua Free High School District High Schools, Desert Edge and Millennium. And then next July, the second, 50% of the second funding will come.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate, yeah, once again, yeah, I appreciate it, and this is definitely one of the, the things a lot of residents, a lot of my people that I talk to all the time are definitely talking about, and it's just, it's good to know that we're being proactive. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
On to me, and this, everybody finished? It's very timely, and the chief knows, and I'm sure it really got his, his temper and his feelings and hurt on this, and I realize that. But I was approached by someone who gave me kind of an overview of a conversation, and essentially, what's the mayor doing about this, and what are the council doing about this, and, and what's going to keep our kids safe? And, and I, and I don't want them talking about you like that. Well, I don't care if they talk about me like that, as long as we solve a problem. And so I asked a few questions, and I realized this person was not informed. And so I really, I got a little concerned about it, and so I came and talked about it today. And I called also on the telephone. So my, I learned one thing about this, is that that information has to continually be put out there. So my question is, what you gave tonight was excellent. That piece of paper you have with all that information, that's intimidating for someone to try to do something wrong. You know what I mean? I mean, it is. And it also is so informative. So somehow, somehow, we need to continue this conversation during this period of time when everybody is on such alert. And I was, I was just exasperated that this person did not know some of these things. And I called and asked them to come tonight, and they could put it on their, their internet, what do you call, social network, and tell them that we were having tonight. And I don't think anybody is here that they possibly called. It was late, and I have to give the person credit. I didn't, wasn't an early on call. So anyway, I just want you to know that my comments today was nothing negative to our police department, because I've been on this council long enough to have seen the growth and seen that on every turn that our police department sees, we find a remedy for it. And it's just been growing. It's unfortunate that crime in society has changed so, that that's growing almost sometimes faster than we are off and on. So I just want you to know that happened. So I'm telling you, when you go to your neighborhood's council, you have to tell them that we sit here and we, we vote to support the police department to be able to do these things. So when they say, well, what are you doing? Well, that's what you're doing. That's a big deal. So as a mayor, we're going to do another INFOCUS one, and the other one was excellent, but we'll do another one, try to get this information out. But I really want more information, and I don't know how we do it, because we don't run this. The schools run all this. And the, the public has to know, and I want that put in our article, you know, bold, that doesn't. So, so it's just somehow, we have to get that information out to those people, because I'm really objective when they do that online. So, yeah, Sherry.
There is another way to get information out that I haven't seen it come out yet, maybe a blurb, because I'm on a parent viewport hole for Liberty Elementary District, and it comes right to my email, and I get notified, and for the high school. So I'm sure they all have the same. Maybe we could put out just a blurb that we do have one, so the parents know. It won't get everybody, but it does get...
The school should want to do that. The school is the first, has all the records. They should want to put this out to prevent this from happening. So I don't know what the conversation is with the school.
Well, you know, we, we will continue to work with City Communications and our Public Information Officer, and do everything we can to get the message and keep putting the message out there of all the good things that we're doing. And we will look into this and see if there's other sites, and, and, you know, there's other possibilities to put information out there, too.
Maybe tomorrow, something, they'll be able to be more of those ways.
Yeah. And that's how I, you know, so I just want you to be alert at that also, and all of the you that are on social network, you know, your mayor's not really, I don't have a Facebook, and I don't have all that kind of stuff. So I'm not, I'm not, but, but if you're in your communities, you should have a dialogue on this. It's very, very important. And I'm sorry, I'm having a throat problem here tonight. But please tell the force how much we think about them and how we appreciate the work they do. And the one thing that I don't think the public knows is the sacrifices they make. The sacrifices of their personal time. So we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else? All right. It's 5:58, so you know what we're going to do, don't you? We're not taking a break. We're going to go into the regular meeting. So if you want to, what I can bring, you know, and we can take a break. Do you need a break? Anybody? Dale's going, yeah?
Sure, just...
Five minutes. All right, why don't I call it to order, and then we'll take a break, okay? We have two minutes.